Good evening, everyone. Could you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Abernathy.
Present.
Bush.
Here.
Dauphin.
Here.
Leveque.
Here.
Otola.
Here.
O'Connell.
Here.
Rogers.
Here.
Schoolnick.
Here.
Tedford Andrew.
Here.
Tedford Jim.
Here.
Tedford, I'm sorry, Wendis.
Here.
Winkler.
Here.
Your Honor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Is there anybody here for Citizens Forum? Dean, just give your name and address. Come on up.
My name is Teresa Lavelle. I live at 20 Middle Terrace. I also own 8 South Terrace. As always, on July 1st, I got these little mementos from the town reminding me how lucky I am to live here and that it has to be paid for. Not complaining about my taxes. I truly do feel they're reasonable if I'm receiving the services that I'm paying for, and that's not happening. My biggest complaint is the Senior Center. We are catering to out-of-towners, and it has got to stop. There was a class two, a couple weeks ago, only 10 people could get in. I had to be there at 7:30 to sign up for that class at 9 o'clock that was sold out at 9:05. Six people were from out of town, four were from Vernon. Charity begins at home. We're paying for these services. They should have to wait, just like South Windsor makes them wait. Manchester doesn't allow out-of-towners. East Hartford doesn't allow out-of-towners. It has to change. It's not right that we're not getting in there. I have brought it up to the senior board, but there has been no changes in policy. Also, they pay the same amount of money that I pay. We already have a precedent in Vernon. Parks and Recreation, non-residents pay at least $10 more for all the programs. Why aren't they paying more at the Senior Center? That would then afford, if it's a budgetary issue, for those of us who are actually paying taxes here, to be able to take those classes or participate in those activities of choice. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Sure.
That's hard to come behind. My name is Bernard Sykes. You can call me Bernie. And I reside at 45 Donnell Road. I come here today, first of all, saying thank you, all of you guys, Town Council, for working for us Vernonites, and I just wanted to say thank you. I also wanted to thank you guys are basically being delivered by the state who authorized for us veterans. I served in the Army, and I wanted to thank you, Michael, for your offering of what you gave me. It was very nice. It was very touching. Thank you. But I wanted to thank you guys for the opportunity to have the taxes be waived. Unfortunately, I'm 100% total, and I basically just wanted to say thank you. And it is extremely beneficial for my family, so we say thank you. Okay? And I just also just wanted to leave off with, there's a lot of major events happening in this world, and we have to work together. We've got to work together. We have more in common than we do our differences if we work together. The Pledge of Allegiance is together for one common goal. Let's not lose that sight. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your service. Anybody else for Citizens Forum? No? Okay. We're going to move, we're going to close Citizens Forum, move on. And we're going to go down to presentations. Let's start with Renee Lambert, President of Opportunity Works.
Do you want me to hold it?
Yeah, please.
I thought maybe they would hold it up. Didn't happen.
You gotta move a little closer to that mic.
Better?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm Renee Lambert, Executive Director, Opportunity Works, and I have Hercules.
And Chris.
And Chris with me today. First, I want to thank you for letting us come tonight. On behalf of Opportunity Works, we want to commend Mayor Dan, Town Administrator Mike, and the whole Town Council for your unwavering support of our business and the individuals with our amazing abilities that we serve in our community. You have proven by awarding us the NIP Patrol contract, supporting us through your social service grants, and reaching out for our assistance in areas that we might have a little expertise in, to be wonderful supporters to a population that does not always feel appreciated nor important. Tonight, we would like to present to you. Hold on. Technical difficulties. We'd like to present to you this token of our appreciation for always making us feel valued, useful, and respected in the Town of Vernon. Thank you all for your continued support of our individuals and our mission. And our guys made that for you as well. That's a creation, a reduce, reuse, recycle.
That is beautiful. Thank you. It says, "2024, thank you for your support, Opportunity Works Incorporated, supporting individuals with amazing abilities." It's absolutely beautiful.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Actually, you don't, you're good. I'm going to come over and get a picture of you guys.
The guys come up, too.
Yeah.
Come on, Hercules. Come on up. Here.
Push it as much as you can, guys. All people in the back.
Come on out in the front.
All right. I have a couple things here. Since I put my glasses on. Anybody that went to the Annual July in the Sky event, once again, this year's fireworks were a hit. Thanks to everyone who donates and works to make this event, an event to remember. I consider that one of the best shows. That was excellent for anybody that was out there. Weather was a little hot, a little rain before, but I thought it was great. So we have the mayor's concert series coming up. It includes three events. October 1st is The Carrie Boys. October 8th is Night Shift. What did I say, October?
Only was that cool.
You know, when I was awake all night last night, August 1st, August 1st, The Carrie Boys, August 8th, Night Shift, and August 15th, Mass Connecticut Fusion. Thank you to our sponsors, Santini Villa Apartments, for their support. All concerts are held in Henry Park, beginning at 6:30 PM each night. Come and join the fun. It's a lot of, a lot of fun, and it's, it's great to see the people dancing at the event as well. We have National Night coming up. This event will be scheduled, is scheduled annually on the first Tuesday of August. August 6th this year, with the rain date of August 7th. The event supports the partnership between the community and police departments nationwide. Lots of activities are planned, and the event runs from 5:00 to 8:00 PM at the Latin Hall parking lot. Come show your support for the nationwide community effort. Summer Days Carnival. This year, the annual event is moving its location from golf land to the student parking lot at Rockville High School. The event is from July 24th to July 27th. Wristbands, rides, and lots of summertime food are among the offerings. This event helps the Send the Kids to Camp program. And as you guys know, every year, they, they will come with the results on that. All right. Two other things. There was a request for the Fox Hill Tower update. Regrettably, the project is moving forward, but regrettably, we are in the contract portion of that, so we will not be discussing that tonight. But the, the project is still moving forward. The update on the Horowitz pool, I can give a little bit of information on that. The, the pool itself is pretty much in the final phase. They're working on the decking. The building, the building was built 1950s, and I don't know who the building inspector was back then. And we can't fire him because I, but you talk about some major issues once we get into that building, and it also showed its age. I think we broke every pipe, wire, going to and from that building, just trying to get to the building and the surrounding. But we are, we can see the finish line now. If any of you have been paying attention, the roof is up, and I think they're just buttoning that up now with all the vents put in place. They've been working on the inside. Our town, town employees are doing a wonderful job, above and beyond on that building, and working in that heat to get that roof put in that fast, you know, hats off to them. So we are online for the end of July, beginning of August, so we're hoping to get a couple weeks out of the, the summer. Again, the stuff we ended up digging up in the, in that poolhouse was a real setback. But we're on track, and the pool lasts for many, many years, and the poolhouse will last at least another 100. That's all we're hoping. We're doing it right this time. All right, and that's, that's it for mine. Let's move on to the consent. Brian?
Mr. Mayor, motion to move the consent agenda as written.
Second, are we pulling any of them? Phyllis?
Yes, I'd like to pull three and five.
Three and number five. Okay, then were you pulling three and five, Brian? Oh, I'm sorry. Any others? All right, all in favor of the consent agenda minus three and five? Unanimous. All right, Brian, number three?
Mr. Mayor, pursuant to the ordinance number 321, establishment of a Fair Rent Commission, the Town Council hereby approves Mayor Daniel A. Champagne's reappointment of Kara Clay, R. 631 Tuckerville Road, Vernon, Connecticut, as a regular member of the Fair Rent Commission. Said term to commence on July 17th, 2024, expires June 30th, 2027.
Seconded by Laura. Phyllis?
Thank you. Merely a question. I applaud her for her willingness to serve, but if I'm not wrong, this is the third border commission that we've appointed her to in this session, in this, since November. Am I right?
The third or fourth since November.
That we've appointed her to.
Diane? You gotta use the mic.
Through you, Your Honor. She was appointed about a year ago because the seat that she took on Fair Rent was only for one year. This is a renewal of that one year, and now she has a full term.
And through you, she's not on other boards and commissions?
No.
Then I am wrong, and all good.
Anybody else? All in favor? Unanimous. Brian, number five?
Mr. Mayor, pursuant to Vernon Charter, Chapter 8, Section 2 and 6, the Town Council hereby approves Mayor Daniel A. Champagne's reappointment of William Francis, R. 11 Lantern Lane, Vernon, Connecticut, as a regular member of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Said term to begin on July 17th, 2024, expires June 30th, 2029.
Seconded. Seconded by John. Phyllis?
I'd just like to vote.
Okay. Anybody else? All those in favor? Noes? Phyllis is a no. Abstentions. Bill is an abstention. Okay, passes. Let's move on to, New Business, number one.
Mr. Mayor, the Town Council hereby authorizes Mayor Daniel A. Champagne or his designee to execute any and all documents to make application for and receive the JAG Local Violent Crime Prevention Grant, grant, grant program funds in the amount of $5,600 to install speed traffic monitoring devices.
Second.
Seconded by Laura. Chief, you want to just describe the devices?
Device that willing to add to this grant. This grant be provided as a stealth speed traffic. I'd like to have it strapped in a pole. Houses to be added to the way, so that we can. Permit there is to that. Also, we can care for the market.
Okay. Right. One other thing, if you look at the, the motion, it says local violent crime prevention grant. It's supposed to be grant with a T. So you want to just move that we correct that?
Sure. Change my word, grant to grants in the motion.
Who seconded it? Who seconded it? Was that John?
I seconded it.
You said it, all right, so you seconded. All right, the first and the second moved to make that corrections. Did you guys get that? Okay. Sorry, Chief. All right. Any, any other questions? All those in favor? Did you have a question?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor.
I thought you were reading a vote.
Do these devices, I've always been curious of this, like if, when you roll up on it and it starts flashing and you're speeding, does this actually take pictures of your license plate?
Just yours.
Can I smile and salute it?
They don't, they don't take pictures.
I'm just curious.
This particular device actually, when I see speed lines, I'll call one of those devices, but this particular grant, we're looking at, you won't see speed, but they do not take pictures of the cars.
Just a monitor?
Statistical. It's just for statistical.
I am all for anything we can do to, you know, make our streets safer and keep the speed limits, you know, let people aware, whatever we can do. Thank you, sir.
We receive a lot of complaints from residents about speeding cars, so this is a device you can put down there and actually get a, a true reading of what the cars are doing.
Yes.
Instead of putting the sign up, where the sign, actually, people start slowing down, or in some cases, want to see how fast they can get themselves going. So, but this, this, this one here is just, it's a box. All right, Bill?
I, I think you just answered this, but forgive me for just putting a finer point on it. To be clear, these particular devices are not going to be used for enforcement. They're used for data gathering and traffic analysis.
Correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Terry?
Through you. Hi. What does JAG mean?
What did you say?
What does JAG mean?
Judge Etiquette General.
Thank you.
I guess I'm, that, that signature can be used for two things, though. Yeah, military and not. Laura?
Yes, thank you, through you. Is it a mobile device? Is it going to be able to be moved around, or is it going to be set in one, one place?
Absolutely. You know, it can be moved. It's a box you can strap on to a pole.
Okay. Then it's versatile.
Right.
Great. Thank you.
If we get a complaint that there's speeders, we can move it to whatever location to get the speeds of the average cars. Second time, Mike.
Second time. Thank you. Through you, Mayor. Is this something easily stolen?
No, I have the license plate strapped on.
Okay. The first thing that popped in my head when he said.
We caught somebody, we caught somebody that stole one of our devices yet before.
Okay.
And they actually got jail time, and they had to pay it back.
Okay. Thank you.
I found it in their fire pit. Second time, Terry?
Okay, thank you. Through you. I, I don't know if this is a question or not, but is it used on state roads or just?
All roads in Vernon, not the highway.
Okay. Thank you.
We do enforcement on even the state roads in town. The only thing we don't do on state roads is tell the state how to design them, and we always get surprised with some of the terrible jobs they do. We, when we ask permission, we gotta wait two years. When asked permission, they just mess it up. All right, anybody else? All those in favor? Unanimous. New Business, number two.
Mr. Mayor, the Town Council hereby authorizes Mayor Daniel A. Champagne or his designee to execute any and all documents to make application for and receive Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation funds in the amount of $24,948 for the purchase and installation of portable speed and traffic monitoring devices and transportable digital message signboards.
Seconded by Maryam. Good job. That was quick. Chief, why don't you describe these?
United to purchase this brand. Critical message board that's portable. Their message board is, it'd be smaller. It also works the same as any of these speed tracking devices. Item along with the purchase of this brand, one of those six speed box signs that we've seen around town. Eye, on the third item on this brand.
So you basically use the message sign to say, road closed ahead, slow down, we're going to set up a roadblock coming, or a speed, or a checkpoint on Friday, things like that. Laura?
Thank you, Mayor, through you. Is this a competitive grant, or is this something that we're definitely going to be able to get?
More than likely, we expect to get the funds. It's a, Firehouse Subs is the same company that, it's the e-bikes from previous to my arrival here. We expect to see positive impact.
Excellent. It's good to know. These would really be great to have in town. Thank you.
Bill?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So the mayor alluded to the street information displays, like block, detour ahead or something like that. Are these also the signs that, that say your speed is?
Through you, sir. This is, yes, the variable message board, the first item I talked about, the program that put informational message out there, road to be closed, we can announce July in the sky, we can say, or it could be set up or turned on just to slow the speakers.
And, and do we have, and maybe these devices, both this and the, and the item that we just talked about, are going to provide you this data, but do we have data about whether or not those speed announcing signs actually are effective in, in calming traffic?
My experience, I have seen them as an education, part of my strategy of educating the public when it comes to motor vehicle.
I used to use them, I used to sit down the road from them because they'd put the radar out there, and then I would just sit there once in a while, because then they wouldn't know if I was going to be there or if the sign was doing the, so your radar detectors were useless. Phyllis?
Thank you, through you. I'm wondering how many devices are included in this grant?
Through you, Mayor. For this grant, it's one, it's the single trailer with the message board signs, the one sign that does the display, one trailer.
So some of those seniors that spoke to you today at the Senior Center are going to see it and think, how come it's not in the place I complained about today, right? Thank you.
Anybody else? Terry?
Through you, thank you. So when you say it's going to be towed or put in a location, is it on a hitch? Does it just go to one of the cruisers? How is it, like, transported to a location?
Yeah, it's towed by one of the cruisers, very like trailer, relatively.
Should try. And then as far as training to put the information into it, is there separate training to, how are they going to know how to work it?
My experience is essentially.
Cell phone.
This is different from the radars that the officer uses in the ride tickets. You have to be certified to do that. This, this is not, you don't, you don't get enforcement off of those signs.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Mike?
So I see this is, oh, three, Mayor. Thank you, sir, again. This is no, no local match needed from us at all, so this is 100% funded. Would, would this or could this possibly be used in the fall when we're doing leaf collection, expected in this neighborhood next week?
Really, we could use it for just about anything. I mean, we could put it up and, and say that it's National Night Out. We can put it for fireworks. We can use it.
Oh, okay. So.
The message.
For all traffic?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Could put it down on Villa Street for that guy in the new truck that races. Anybody else? All in favor? Unanimous. All right, thank you, Chief. All right, ordinances, introduction of ordinances. Brian, number one?
Mr. Mayor, the Town Council, consistent with Chapter 5 of the Vernon Town Charter, Section 6, entitled Public Hearing on and Publication of Ordinances, hereby schedules a public hearing regarding an ordinance entitled Garbage and Refuge Collectors, Storing of Solid Waste, Violations and Penalty, Appeals, repealing and replacing Section 6 and 12 of Ordinance Number 296. In accordance with CGS 7-157B, further authorizes the town clerk to publish a summary of the proposed action, said public hearing to take place at 7:35 PM on Tuesday, August 20th, 2024, located at the Vernon Town Council Chambers, 3rd Floor, 14 Park Place, Vernon, Connecticut, to receive comments and questions relative to the proposed ordinance.
Seconded by Maryam. All right, so you're going to see these first two, and when we're going through the ordinances, we have already adjusted all of the fines for most of the, the ordinances that we've brought before us. This is still cleaning it up. So these two ordinances had an actual number in there, and it's being referred back to the statute. So whatever the statute authorizes, it's, they're both just cleanup. Questions on that? Bill?
So just to clarify what you, the, the change that you just mentioned is the only change?
Yeah.
Even though we have the, the full text of the ordinance that's being repealed and repealed?
There's only, the only part that's being corrected in there is the fine portion, and it's just referring back to the statute.
The change from a fixed $100 to, to the, to the max under the statute?
John, that's correct, right? Correct me if I'm wrong. Get up here. Or Lou, one of you two. This is the way I understood it. of you two. This is the way I understood it.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, the amount of the fine is changed to reflect the maximum amount allowable by statute right now. The statute, under certain circumstances, can allow a fine of up to $250 per occurrence. That won't be the case in most circumstances because in order for that fine to be levied, you have to have advanced, you have to give a warning letter and provide a hearing procedure. So I would think for many ordinances, the maximum fine would still remain the $100. But there are some where that's appropriate, where you do give an opportunity for the offender to correct their actions, and you can levy that higher fine. And the reason we added the language that we did was that rather than amending our ordinance every time the legislature raises the maximum, this will simply track the maximum as it gets amended by the legislature.
Thank you. I was just trying to make sure there weren't any other changes because it's kind of hard to track.
We've done this with a lot of stuff. We're trying to match it to the state law so that we're not going and doing this every single time. Anybody else? Phyllis?
Through you. I just want to be sure. I think it really just means garbage, but if somebody isn't using, I don't know, a piece of furniture anymore, sometimes people put that by the side of the road with a sign that says free. I think this would not include that.
Through the mayor, that's actually incorrect. So it would include that. One of the reasons for the change here is people are placing, the ordinance says it needs to be out no more than 24 hours in advance. People are leaving things trash and debris. They're just throwing it to the curb, expecting the town to pick it up. That's not how the system works. They have to call. They have to schedule a bulky waste pickup. Sometimes it's tenants, sometimes it's others, sometimes it's just people driving by saying, this looks like a good spot for it. So this will provide for a written notice, a written warning, saying this item cannot be there. You can call and correct by, the ordinance already allows for that. But if they don't do anything, our recourse was only to issue a citation of $100. In some cases, it's per day. The paperwork, the effort needed to track that, $100 is significant, but $250 may get their attention a little bit more. So that's one of the reasons for the change. And I just wanted to make mention, the next one is for a separate ordinance that a lot of ordinances refer back to. So this change will handle the bulky waste and the roadside refuse. The next?
We gotta stick to the one. Sorry.
No problem.
So just to be?
We're only talking about number one right now, but.
Just to be clear, I understand about the bulky waste. You don't want people putting it out a week before the town can come pick it up. But that would mean all those people that say, you know, free firewood, or here's a, like I said, piece of furniture, free for the taking. They would be subject to this warning and subsequent fine.
Trust me, if they can't get rid of that stuff by the time that fine comes along, then they're never getting rid of it. It's not like you go and issue an infraction. There's a whole long process to get to that. And usually, within 24 hours, anybody that puts something out, hopefully they're using one of the websites and they get rid of it within a day or so.
Okay.
But what we're looking at is, number one, when somebody moves out and they put their entire apartment out on the front, $100 is not going to pay to get rid of that. Even the $250 is not enough to get rid of that. And we're not going to leave this stuff blocking the entire sidewalk, creating a hazard for everybody. But we should be able to come back and at least find them something.
Yeah, no.
Because it's, you know, absolute disgrace to throw an entire, whatever. We've all seen it. But we're not talking about, and trust me, these guys have leeway in what they do. You put something out there that's free and you got a nice-looking dresser out there, if that lasts a whole day, you're gonna be lucky. So if you put garbage out and you write free, that's, you know, it's not gonna work.
And just one last thing. So the Section 6 and 12, I don't actually see. I see a lot of 7 and then a Section 1 through 9 about the penalty, but I don't see 12. I assume the 6 is in that 1 through 9, but I don't see.
Aren't we only voting on a public hearing? It's true.
It's a friendly point of order, Mr. Mayor. Aren't we only voting to establish a public hearing on August 20 for this and the following two proposed ordinances? We're not talking about the substance of anything. The public has a chance to be heard on this in the interest of transparency. We should listen to the public, I think, and hear their input, and then we can give our input, and eventually we will have all this before we vote on the ordinance. Yes, through you?
You're right. Thank you.
So, can I follow up? So, I can't speak at the public hearing.
No, you can at a public, for this, you can speak.
Okay. All right, I just thought clarification. If someone asks me and I say I couldn't find 6 and 12, and I can't, was not allowed to ask? That's what you're telling us we're voting on? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, but through you, I would say, suggest to my colleague, if someone was to ask you about this, you should suggest that they come here on August 20 to the public hearing, where they can not only ask questions about it, they can hear their fellow citizens' thoughts on this, and hear the council's thoughts on this at that time on August 20.
Anybody else? Mike? No? Thought you had to hand up. Okay. So you're up if you want to talk.
Through you, Mayor. I just wanted to clarify something on this. He says each day shall constitute a separate offense.
You're getting into it, Mike. You're right, you're getting into it.
So that's why I said, I'm good. Thank you.
You're right, John. I should have stopped this a little while ago. All right, anybody else? All in favor? Opposed? Abstention. Phyllis is abstaining. All right, let's move on. Brian, number two?
Mr. Mayor, the town council, consistent with Chapter 5 of the Vernon Town Charter, Section 6, entitled Public Hearing on and Publication of Ordinances, hereby schedules a public hearing regarding an ordinance entitled General Penalty Repealing and Replacing Section 4 of Ordinance Number 194.
We're not done yet.
And in accordance with Connecticut General Statutes 7, I'm sorry, Connecticut General Statutes 7-157B, further authorizes the town clerk to publish a summary of the proposed action, said public hearing to take place on August 20, 2024, at 7:45 p.m. at the Town Council Chambers, 3rd Floor, 14 Park Place, Vernon, Connecticut, to receive comments and questions relative to the proposed ordinance.
All right, second, Mike. Seconded by Mike. All right, have you noticed this one is the, this one goes back to a penalty. So this is a general penalty, but it refers to a lot of different ordinances that refer back to this section. All right, questions on this? Brian?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Spadini. So is this the same explanation you gave us in the last ordinance, catching up with whatever the legislature does?
Correct. Through the mayor, yes.
Oh, thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you. Anybody else? All those in favor? Unanimous. All right, number three?
Mr. Mayor, the town council, consistent with Chapter 5 of the Vernon Town Charter, Section 6, entitled Public Hearing on and Publication of Ordinances, hereby schedules a public hearing regarding an ordinance entitled Line of Duty Death Determinations. In accordance with Connecticut General Statutes 7-157B, further authorizes the town clerk to publish a summary of the proposed action, said public hearing to take place on August 20, 2024, at 7:55 p.m. at the Vernon Town Council Chambers, 3rd Floor, 14 Park Place, Vernon, Connecticut, to receive comments and questions relative to the proposed ordinance.
Seconded by Laura. So the, this is in relation to a statute that was just passed, where part of the statute realigns what we do here in the town of Vernon. The only way to overdo it is by passing an ordinance. Through workers' compensation, the only one that determines if somebody's eligible for workers' compensation currently in town is HR. That's pretty much where it should be at all times. This statute was shifting that to two department heads, and that's not where it belongs. It all stays with HR. And that's the simple fact on that. And that's why we're presenting this ordinance, so that the state is not passing laws to change how we do business. All right, questions? All those in favor? Unanimous. Brian, minutes?
Mr. Mayor, the town council weighs the reading of the minutes of the regular town council meeting of June 18, 2024, and that minutes of said meeting be approved.
Second.
Terry, seconded by Terry. Look over. I knew it was one of you. All right, are we doing any changes or corrections on those minutes? No? All those in favor? Unanimous. Brian? Brian?
Mr. Mayor, motion to adjourn.
Did you say it that time? All right, seconded by Maryann. All those in favor? Unanimous.